It's six thirty and we're going to call tonight's special meeting order. And we have Ed Pianalto, myself, Tom Gibb. We have Ramon Reed and Jera Garrettson is on Zoom, so we're all here. And smaller group as we are, let us begin this meeting as per our tradition with a pledge of allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have two items on our agenda this evening. A special meeting agenda for September twenty-fourth. So for council action, number one, discuss with possible action posting an RFP for snow plowing services. And I think you all got a copy of the RFP. So just by way of interest, I will say that I received quite a bit of, actually quite a lot, of negative feedback on this subject, which ranges from an envelope. And there were a couple of those and a few people expanded upon that not fair theme. And then there was the crowd that was worried. And they're worried, well, we've had pretty good service and we apparently didn't really need to do this. And how many dollars would it take to switch our service providers? And so forth and so on. So there is a contingency out there that is worried on several levels and have been happy with the service that has been provided and are somewhat fearful that a change may not be everything we hoped it would be. So with that being said, I would also like to throw out with regards to snow removal, that the county comes around and we all know the kind of burn that whatever they come by with, whether it's grader or truck, what kind of burn that throws up. And then we also know what our private service providers, what they do in with our streets. And in regard to that, I believe it was last year, we approved a policy that said, yes, we understand that burns are created and the individual, you know, we give it to your house, but you're in charge of clearing your own driveway. And if you run a business or have a parking lot that you need cleared, why you will be, that will be your responsibility also. So I just want to throw that out there just one more time in case people have forgotten the, some winters have been more severe than others and the burns on the side of the road vary with them. So I wanted to throw that out there. And is there any discussion on this RFP proposal that we have received? Yes, go ahead, Ed.
I'd like to add too that I've talked to a number of people in town who are students that feel very strongly that the RFP should be done when there are people in town that could possibly.
Pardon me, I can't, I cannot hear Ed.
Okay, Ed, better?
Yes, thank you.
So there's been a number of people in town that feel like it should go out to an RFP when there are potentially a couple of people in town that are actually citizens, taxpaying citizens that may like to bid on it.
Okay, thank you, Ed. So as you know, the board voted last time that we would not approve the RFP proposal and that we would be discussing this and deciding on what this RFP looks like. On the last page, you will have noted a, and I'm not sure this is a good idea, splitting up the responsibility of various streets to various individuals. That seems like that could get a bit sticky. I would be more inclined to say whoever takes this bid takes the bid and goes the whole Savannah.
What are you referring to, Tom? Was that sent out with the agenda or was that sent out separately?
Separately.
Oh, we're here.
I don't see it. Oh, this afternoon, so, okay.
So that's, am I misreading this or is that what that says? Multiple award. Say again, please.
Was there enough notice given on that? I thought it had to be like twenty-four hours to kind of correspond.
Well, this, this is a vote to put this to an RFP by the town. So it'll go out probably hit Thursday's paper?
No, next week.
Next week, okay, so anyway. Any other thoughts on this? I went through the list of all the streets and I did pick up on any that were officially missed, but I, yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am, please, go ahead.
I just, I just did receive this contract, I think that's what it's called. I just received it, hmm, not even thirty minutes ago. So I barely got to read it and I asked the former street commissioner to please look it over. Two, can, can I ask the former street commissioner to comment?
Well, that would be under public comments, but I don't see why not.
Not under public comments, I want him, I would like him to, or we can wait until you ask for comments, but we need to be able to discuss, he has, I don't know how many years' experience with this.
We'll wait a minute till these guys put their way in and then we'll take some points from some others.
I don't have to be in on a damn thing, it's just your problem.
You can pull that up.
I got reading.
That will happen when it starts.
Just from my reading of this, I think it, it lays it out clear enough to, for the contractors to submit a proposal. That's what we're asking, request for proposals. And, you know, we can deal with anything that may be missing or more than we want at the time we review the proposals. So I don't see any problem with publishing what we have.
I'm going to go back to your comment if we could about the multiple awards of the RFP.
Yes.
Did you say that you didn't believe that we should do a multiple award?
Well, we've not in the past, that has not typically been the way it goes. And as I said, it could get a bit sticky. Depends on, so it says right there, it says misprint, then town of Pittkin reserves the right to select more than one successful independent contractor to this RFP. And I can see on the one hand why that might, that might be okay. And on the other hand, I can see why that might not be okay.
So, the question I would have is if we did a multiple award of the RFP, who decides which contractor is going to come out when it snows?
Well, that's what we're talking about there, therefore a bit sticky.
Very, I don't, I don't like that, those two paragraphs and all that stuff.
So we, we can, we can just delete that. Would that, is that suitable? We can just delete that from the, from our submittals? Okay.
I would concur with that idea also.
Okay.
And are the streets listed? Is that from the list from last year? Have we had anybody else requesting additional things in that? Has a request been posted for people that they want their street to be included?
No. People still have an opportunity to contact the town if they know that they're going to be plowing. I will post a list after the meeting.
So, so we could update that list until, with the, well, the RFP that we would post and show those streets.
Well, it says below is an example of the scope expected. So if there are changes that are not seen, it really should not affect a person's ability to bid.
Should be minimal additions.
Mr. Mayor Protam?
Go ahead.
So I didn't, I'm still having a little difficulty hearing. So we don't have to have the exact streets. I think those were majorly very good. But I did have a couple of questions. I, maybe they can be addressed in, after this is put out, if those, if that doesn't have to be an exact list. I had about three questions that Jesse helped me with.
Okay, Jared Gibson question, probably now would be just as good a time as any.
Okay, didn't the county do First Street to, to River Street and Downriver? Last year? I'm not sure and I don't know if he was sure either. We just barely got this contract. I asked him for some help since he was former snowplow street person. And also, what about, I think it has to go clear, courts, when they're going past, like on the Nassau Drive, it goes past, I forget how that was said now and I don't have any way, I didn't have any way to print this off. It has to go past Nassau's drive, Cory Nassau's drive.
Don't stop at courts.
Instead of stopping at courts, it goes on past his drive and they dump it into the, you know, like what would be the creek.
So you kind of cut out there at the end, Jera?
And I'm not sure what, well, it just needs to be done, like the snow was dumped Cory Nassau's drive and they dump it into the creek where it goes down into the creek. But it, it wasn't real.
Just stops at courts.
Oh, Jess said it stops at courts, but it doesn't, it shouldn't. And these are just small things that maybe don't have to even be addressed on, you know, until it's already, until the bids come in. And I'm not sure, oh, hey, I do, I did pick this up myself, that on Armstrong, that needs to go more than just past the first house because I think that Geigley's, it goes up past Geigley's.
So when you, yeah, when you say up, are we talking upstream or downstream?
Down, downstream.
Yeah, okay, all right.
On Armstrong, you know, off of Third.
Correct.
So it would be a half a block, not just past the first house.
Well, it sounds like we can get these addressed.
And Alpine from Second to Sixth. I, I think these small things can be addressed later if, if you, if that's what's.
So what, Alpine from Second to Third, what?
You know, it's not just the beginning of that, this is, this, the scope, this is an example of the scope.
Right, so there'll be some nuances there.
Yeah, they can change not only within the contract, but during the snow season.
Right, okay.
People come and go, so, I mean, we don't have to worry about, you know, every.
Naming it right down to the driveway.
Okay.
I'm fine, I think.
Okay, all right, at this time, do we have any, Jera, you said Jesse has something he wanted to say?
Well, I might have covered it, but I have, I myself found what I think is a problem with, there, there's a sentence in there about that the successful recipient has to prove professional snow removal experience. And I think that would let out, I mean, I can't, I don't know who in, in locally in town might be looking into this, but I don't know that any of the two or three people that I can think of would actually qualify as professional snow, have passed professional snow removal experience.
This is interested, bidders will be scored on the following criteria. And it may be that that would be something that would cause someone to be included or excluded. I think it's not unreasonable.
Take that line out. About to use that for a chance.
Well, it's one of the criteria that bidders will be scored on the following. And so if you, you know, whatever you've got, you know, if you've been plowing your driveway for the last how many years and I don't know, so that would be up to the board here, whether they want to include or exclude them.
I do have a concern when we say interested bidders will be on the following criteria. What's the scoring mechanism, how are we scoring?
Well, so, there's, so equipment to be used, that's the first thing on the list. That would be, what do you got? Have you got backup? You know, there's a redundancy factor here that needs to be covered in case your blower eats something it shouldn't, if you're losing a blower. And then, and then also, you know, are you a solo act or have you got someone to help you out? I mean, it looks kind of straightforward to me.
I just don't want to come back after we look at the business and say, well, we're going to get one point. You say what to be used, one point. We're going to do that, that needs to be cleared here. I agree with you that we need to look at what the equipment is that they're going to be used. How many employees, personnel available to plow? You know, some recurrence costs proposed, proposed plowing, initiation time for snow events.
Yeah.
I think those are things to look at.
They all play in and.
I, I think this, a simple change, we should, I don't know where to score, put any value in it. I mean, nothing requires a score or anything.
I think that's a good.
When we get the, whatever bids we get, we'll evaluate.
Interested bidders will be evaluated on the following criteria.
Yeah.
I think that's a very good, best thing to know.
Love it, if you do that.
Okay, anything else from the front? Because we're going to go to public comments? All right, public comment time. I think Jesse already got his in, yes or no?
Jesse, did you get yours in? He, he's busy with his mother right now.
Okay, all right. Mr. Nassau, I think we have a microphone up there.
You should probably keep yours.
Yeah, keep yours.
I'll go there.
Got it?
All right.
All right, Mr. Nassau, please.
Mr. Nassau, our RFP passed, it worked fine, why are we changing that? I can't do the same one we've already used. Sounds like it's getting a little more complicated.
They want to go to pick and choose the other one to use.
So. I don't know, I read through it, it didn't look.
You don't have to answer, I'll just talk.
Right, right, okay, public comment, thank you, Mr. Nassau. Anyone else? Okay. Pete, please, go ahead.
Yes, this is Pete Olson, thank you. I think that a little background might be helpful as you move forward. And, you know, I think there's an old saying that those who fail to learn from the past may fail again. And I think it's important for the board to understand the history that got you to this point this evening. Some years ago, there were a few local residents who sort of created a controversy and the county indicated that it planned to pull plug on providing services to Pittkin. At that time, there was a committee created which included the then mayor and a council member and the street commissioner who was Jesse and myself. And we met with the county and for the first year that they had indicated they wanted to quit serving Pittkin, they agreed to continue to give Pittkin an opportunity to sort out how it was going to handle snow plowing in the future. So that committee worked with the county and the workhorse was Mr. Garrettson because he worked with the public works folks from the county to help solve some of the concerns they had about plowing in Pittkin. And in the ensuing year, this committee and the council tried to work out a process that would satisfy the county and keep them at least doing main state and river streets. And then the town would contract to do side streets. The first year, a list was put out requesting bids and Quartz Creek Companies submitted a bid, the only bid. And so that particular year, I think it was probably five years ago, they did it. And then the next year, the same thing happened. But after that year, Quartz Creek Company indicated that it was unwilling or unable to continue because of their workload. So the town was back to square one. At that point in time, a request for proposals similar to what you're discussing this evening was put out. And that would have been, I think, in the fall of nineteen, or eighteen, twenty twenty, twenty twenty or twenty twenty-one. Nobody bid. So the then mayor, Mr. Balch, was able, and I think with the assistance again of Mr. Garrettson, who's very instrumental in this and who, incidentally, I think the council should come to its senses and reappoint him. But that's just an unsolicited endorsement of Mr. Garrettson. However, nobody bid, but then they were able to contact Gunnison Valley Excavation, who came forward with a reasonable price. And for the last two years, Gunnison Valley Excavation has done that. And this year, unfortunately, in the absence of there being a street commissioner, the ball sort of got dropped in getting started on the process you're embarking on now. I would draw your attention to your minutes and meeting packets of March twenty twenty-three, wherein the town council adopted a snow removal policy after having considered two options. Am I able to continue?
Yes.
Okay, and the very specific process is laid out in that policy. First of all, it indicates that the goal of the town of Pittkin is to provide snow removal to the driveway or parking area of winter residents. And it further provides that access to businesses will be provided, but the clearing of areas for business parking is a responsibility of the business owner. It further provides that in August of every year, the town is to publish a draft route list and that by the end of September, any property owners who either won't need the service who, who are interested in receiving a service should notify the street commissioner or the town clerk by the end of September. And subsequent to that, then this bidding process would go forward. But again, in the absence of having anybody available to bid several years ago, the town embarked upon an arrangement with Gunnison County or Gunnison Valley Excavation. And I know there are some concerns from individuals in the community that perhaps this should be put out to a competitive bid. I would say at this eleventh hour, having just received a couple inches of snow and the snow season close at hand, it would be beneficial to revisit the agreement with Gunnison Valley Excavation and commit to the community that next year, in a timely manner, starting in August or sooner, the town council will move forward to secure snow removal services. Because you run the risk of having people with little experience, bidding or not bidding, you've got a qualified contractor that's provided service to the town the last two years that knows exactly what's going on. And so I think you should consider that before you move forward. But I would urge you to review that snow removal policy that was established a year and a half ago. And in the future, you need to follow that. And moving forward, I think you need to make a reasonable decision as to the benefit of all the property owners in the community. So I hope that's been helpful and those are my comments and thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Pete. Go ahead, Jay.
All right. I appreciate Pete's comments and I would ditto the fact that I believe the council should get on their hands and knees to ask Justin Garrettson to come back. The street commissioner, maybe we could avoid some of these things. As far as the eleventh hour, that's no one's fault but the trustees. Because as Pete pointed out, you have a very specific process with deadlines on how to proceed with snow removal. Bidding, that was not followed. So it's not anyone else's fault but the trustees. Um, as an individual interested in bidding on the snow removal, uh, maybe Pete doesn't understand this, but, and I have nothing against Gunnison Excavation, I, I think they did fine. But, uh, there are multiple occasions this last winter where who bailed them out? None other than me and Phil. Now, I think Phil sent the town a bill, but I never did. So that's something to keep in mind. If you think they did such an amazing job, which I'm not saying they did a horrible job at all. They were bailed out a few times by local taxpaying entities. So I think that should be considered. Thank you.
Thank you, Jay. Well, okay then. So regarding the format of this RFP, um, Ed asked if we might strike that multiple award, didn't you ask that? Uh, multiple award, award issue, uh, because that might cause a little, um, confusion or other problems. So I think that I would recommend that. Other than that, I see, uh, no particular issues with, um, putting this request for proposals out, so.
Quick question. I know the old RFP had a provision for insurance, the new version. It just didn't come out, I'm just curious.
Were insurance required?
Yeah.
Yes. And a liability of a hundred thousand workers' compensation for contractors.
The, the town should also put in there that the town needs to be added as other insurance on the insurance policy of road plowing. Um, that came from our insurance company.
So our insurance company said that?
At least so, that's what I heard.
It does have a phrase here, the town requires that they be added as additional insurance.
All right. All right, with that provision, are we good with this? You want a motion? I think it's time to entertain a motion.
I'll move if we publish the request for proposals on snow plowing as we discuss modifying the P V.
Is there a second there? Okay, we have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you, Jared. Okay, going out in biz, guys. All right, next issue. This is the second one on our agenda. Discuss with possible action approving an easement agreement with Century Link Lumen. Are they also known as Quest Corporation?
I'm not sure.
Oh, no, okay, never mind.
They used to be.
Well, you know, cause it says Century Link QC. And I thought, well, and then up here, never mind. Maybe I've got the wrong contractor. All right, any discussion on this?
So my first question goes back, I guess, for a meeting last week. Information we received, Jared. On Century Link. State that they didn't need the agreement or the easement agreement that they would work with the property owner to fix the line or set up.
That is the next thing.
So we failed, they're not, now they're not asking for the easement agreement, I'm not sure.
I thought she brought him over here.
What's that, Jared?
I hope they didn't get put in the freezer, cause.
It's not Jared, it's not Jared.
So I guess with Ed's question, I guess a little clarification, if you could provide it. On this easement agreement with Century Link, what, what is it that they are? Is this the same as that map we got last, at the last meeting? It's the same thing?
Just to give you some input on this?
Well, the, the input that I gave with the last meeting, I think, you know, we should proceed with the easement agreement. And as our attorney said, it, it's not a problem with the, um, whether, whether Century Link wants to work with the property owner preferably and, and do it in the existing location or on State Street, I don't really care. I just care that that the phone lines be taken care of. And I, I hesitate at not dealing with it because, you know, our, our phone service is tenuous at best. And, you know, I don't see any problem with, you know, there are, there are not only phone lines, but electrical lines on private property and public property all over town. And this isn't going to change any of that. It, it's simply what Lumen, Century Link, whatever they're gonna call themselves, that's what we're requesting and, you know, allowing the easement in State Street for the block, block and a half that is, is required. It doesn't make any difference to what we're doing as a town or the traffic or anything else. I think we, you know, I don't see any problem with the approving the easement and if Century Link wants to continue discussions, their discussions with the private property owner, fine. But I don't, I don't want to do anything to hold it up. I want it to get done, you know, so that people in town and especially on that end of town where the, these lines are can depend on the service.
Okay, so one way or the other, you would like to see actually both options available.
Sure.
Okay. Mr. Pete Yanato, you have anything to add to this?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just confused if they, if Century Link has said they don't need the easement agreement. And they wanted to withdraw, why would they kind of sign an easement?
They, they didn't say they wanted to withdraw, they said they would just prefer to go the route of trying to work with the homeowner.
Then, then my feeling is that we let Century Link work with the homeowner to fix the lines and if at a later date they want to come back and give them the easement agreement, then we do it then. I, I think, sounds like we're trying to give them something they may not want. They don't, they're saying they don't.
I don't, if they don't want it, it doesn't matter. If they don't want it, they're not going to put their line in easement. So what? I'm just, I'm just asking that we do this so it can get done. You know, we're in Sep, the end of September and everything that, you know, needs to be done in the streets, including snow plowing and burial of lines, needs to get done. And putting it off for another month or until some agreement is or isn't worked out with the private property owner, it is not my concern, it's getting it done.
Just hang on. So, um, I tend, I tend to agree with Ramon, this gives them double options. Um, and, um, either, either way, uh, it works out.
Mr. Mayor, pro tem?
Yes, ma'am, please go ahead.
Uh, I don't have any problem with easement, uh, agreement myself at all. Uh, but was it under this, was it supposed to be under, Ramon was gonna share with us last meeting? Was it, was it gonna be tonight? Or am I remembering wrong? I thought maybe that was under, there was something real important last meeting that Ramon was going to share and then there was a question, and I thought it was under this agenda item, but maybe I'm wrong.
I, I did share at the last meeting that at least one property owner in town who uses not only Century Link ground line service, but also the, the DSL service has been notified that the DL service, at least for them, I don't know if this is townwide or not, but it's going to be discontinued as of October thirty-first. I don't care about that. I do care about the phone service because that includes our nine-one-one. And, you know, it's a a matter of both convenience and safety to the residents of this town. And I don't want to have the unapproved easement be an obstruction that could be used at, at some point for Lumen or Century Link or whoever the heck is doing it to say, you know, we're just gonna drop service altogether, it's too big of a problem in Pittkin. There's no reason for us to put any obstruction in the way.
Yes.
Okay.
I, I'm, I'm hearing that.
I wouldn't have a problem with that if they were still wanting, but I'm not sure that they're still requesting.
What does it matter?
Why, why say here?
We have said that they want to work with the property owner, that doesn't guarantee that it's going to get done on the private property and then they come, if that's the case, you know, they'll be using the easement. If they can work it out with the private property, then nothing is done on, in State Street.
Really, was, okay, so just given from the last meeting and, and to here and it would, so the impression I get is they would still like this on the table. Um, Ed's question is, would they like this on the table and, um, so. Sarah, do you have any input on that that would do us any good?
Let me pull up the email and see if it has anything.
Okay. While we are waiting. Chad, I see you're standing there, why don't you give us some input?
Hey, Chad, we're down here. Um, I, I don't know if y'all read the easement agreement that they're requesting from you, and I want to remind you what Jesse brought up last time. Basically, they wanted a blanket that said that they open the streets, air the streets up, air the culprits up. And you can even tell by the end of the meeting that they were gonna replace things back to the present conditions. Uh, just to let everybody on the board know, they have not contacted me yet uh, for access to the property, uh, just like I told y'all, just like I told that contractor. As soon as they give me a proof of insurance, uh, it's all good, they can do what they need to do, but they, they have to give us proof of insurance. And this little bit of an easement, it's two blocks long, does nothing for the rest of the town. I'm not not allowing you to fix this, I just want them to show me that they're either self-insured, which in, in the state of Texas, the state of Colorado, if you have self-insurance, you still have to show proof of insurance. Whether it's self-insurance, a bond, whatever, as long as they show me that they are covered, and, and not only them, it's the contractors they send out. Uh, you know, they, they sent out a, an old Chevy truck with no sticker on the side and an excavator showed up and said, we're about to dig this thing up. They never called eight-one-one, I know, directly below the phone line is the power. They never, you know, nothing was marked and they just decided they were gonna come in there and dig with an excavator and I was like, not, not until we have insurance. But this easement agreement does nothing for the town, it's just two blocks, so just wanted to help.
So they, they didn't always say one way or the other, whether they wanted to also have the easement as a potential backup if um, discussions with the private property owner, um, did not have preparation for fixing the, the damage? They, they didn't say one way or the other, whether they took it off the table and decided or whether they wanted to go forward.
I have one more comment. Did, has the town, uh, given core, my, my contact information to the phone company? Are we, do we need permission to do that? I mean, I would love to hear from them, I'd love to get it fixed. But, you know, I, I own the neighbor's property and have to move up to that line, just sitting on top of the ground. So if, if you could, if I could give you permission to give my contact information or if you share like a group email or something, to where we can have some kind of correspondence opened up, we can get this rectified, I'm down for that.
So Sarah has said that, uh, they have not verified one way or the other, what their preference is. How did we come by this in the first time around, first place? Sarah?
You mean, how did the issue get sent in the first place to the town?
This easement agreement came from them.
They, right, they, they sent us the easement agreement, we sent it to Clay, he reviewed it, you received his email, the truth review. Um, that, that's where it came from, from, from Century Link.
So it, so it kinda started here with, up on the chair's corner.
Right, that's initially what initiated the problem, is that there was damage then to the line, which, um, affected service and they reached out and asked if we would be willing to do an easement agreement so that they could repair the damage because the property owner would not allow them to fix the damage. And so I said, choose an easement agreement and we'll get over, and so then they sent it, and hence.
Okay.
They don't have any other easement agreement in the town of Pittkin?
I, I don't know.
Well, years ago, as you all know, our, our electric utilities and phone lines and everything just kinda went in willy-nilly and you have to be careful where you dig. That's why we call first. Um, and, uh, you know, I know I've got, uh, phone lines running across my property. So I, I am not opposed to this easement agreement. Just as it. Just as it, as it reads. As to so I was looking for the Culver clause here, but I didn't find that.
I don't see anything in it, if they tear up the street or anything, that they'll.
Any other discussion up here from the board? I know Ramon wants multiple options so he can get this done. I'm not totally opposed to that. I don't see multiple options. Now, we do have, you know, issues with not erecting anything on the property and, and so forth and so on. Jared, do you have any thoughts? You've been pretty quiet.
I was just going to ask if you're ready to entertain a motion.
Okay. I do believe we are. I think we've been rounding rounds.
I, I move that we accept the contractual easement agreement. What, what is the title? Sarah, please.
You could just call it the easement agreement.
Okay, I move that we accept the easement agreement from Century Link slash Lumen, whatever the name of that corporation is.
I second that. Okay. We've been moved and we've been seconded. All in favor, say aye. 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 Abode?
Aye.
All right. Motion carries to accept the easement agreement. As far as I know, that concludes our agenda for this evening. So at this time, out of character, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. I move we adjourn.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Thank you all for coming. This meeting's over.